Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Monday, March 17th, 2025 Board of Education Meeting to order at 7:02. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Rodriguez, would you please read our mission statement?
Of course. The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is a shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
Thank you. Board introductions, I'd like to start with everyone introducing themselves. Ms. Zapata, would you start us off, please?
Amanda Zapata.
Carmen Rodriguez.
Rhannette James.
Ken Zymon.
Susan Riquio.
Tassiana Messina-Mullin, Vice Chair.
Betty Hadlock.
Anthony Scorinzi.
Any public participation? Not seeing anyone. I'd like to move on to consent agenda. I need a motion to accept the first item under the consent agenda. The first item is the minutes from the February 10th, 2025 Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from that? Betty? And a second? Do I have a second? Oh, Amanda. Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Opposed? Obseined? Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Scarpetti.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I hope everyone at home and here have been enjoying their St. Patrick's Day. This past weekend, our students had a nice, long weekend while our staff had a day of professional learning, which was shared in the board update. In a moment, I'm going to ask Dr. Russo to share some details what occurred this past Friday. In addition, I think you may recall that Rotary gave us a gift of $15,000 for mental health support. I've asked Mrs. Edo to provide some information on how we've continued to use those funds. And as all of you know, we are immersed into the budget process. On Monday, March 3rd, the Board of Education budget was presented to the Board of Finance. We extended our thanks to the Board of Finance for their time. Following meetings include the Board of Finance Budget Hearing, that's on April 22nd. The Annual Tell Meeting will be May 14th. And the Orange Budget Referendum is on May 21st. And again, that's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Again, those dates have been shared with all of you, but I will continually share that in any board update that will be provided. All our presentations are on the website, so if anyone's interested in looking at the presentations, please do so. I know when we had our budget workshop, it was discussed that I should make it clear to the Board of Finance about what we're asking. I know at the budget workshop, many of you said, Vince, what are there's concerns that you may have or needs? And I shared about possibly needing more teachers. I think for anyone who watched it online or anyone attended, I think I made it clear to the Board of Finance that as in years past, if that need occurs, I will have to come back to you in July or so to do so. So, you know, I want to make sure that, to let all of you know that weren't able to attend or didn't have an opportunity to watch the video, that I made that clear with the Board of Finance. And just for my own benefit, at the very end, I had a slide that said, "Thank you." And again, I extended gratitude to all of you and your hard work and your guidance that you provided. I went through staff. I went through the first selectman who's been very supportive, selectmen, Board of Finance, Mr. Sifrelli, faculty and staff here for all their hard work supporting our kids. And I neglected to reference the Police Department. Mr. Gray and I were walking out, and I said, "I forgot the Police Department." So, I really felt badly about that. We work hand in hand with a variety of things. As you know, things pop up throughout the year. Chief Gagny is accessible to me at all hours of the night, and our school resource officers do a fantastic job. So, I had a little guilty conscience that I want to make sure that I extended my gratitude to all of them, too. As we enter mid-March, the school year is picking up quite a bit in a sense of activities and such. After April break, which is April 14th through the 17th, it even picks up even faster. I will be asking if there's no unforeseen circumstances of another delay or, I should say, cancellation of school. Right now, our last day of school is Monday, June 9th. If we, for example, the meteorologist shared an email with us this morning and said that there may be a pending snowstorm. It's not a volatile one. It looks like it's going to die down, but you never know. We've had snow later on in the month, but I'll be requesting the board to have the last day of school on that Friday, which is June 6th. So, I wanted to give you some notice on that. I also want to thank Orange Youth Services and Prevention. Many of you know, there's a new coordinator, Chantel Benel. She actually created an event at Peck Place called Screenagers. We had about 30 people attend. Some board members attended also. I thought it was a great night. The challenges that parents have with regarding their children on screens, and it could be in front of video games and phones, you could tell it's a real interest. And I believe Chantel is going to be doing a follow-up with that with regards to possibly if those people weren't able to attend, they could actually see the documentary that was provided. And I'm collaborating with that, so hopefully we could get that to all our parents. Want to reach out and say thanks to the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts. They invited me to the Blue and Gold Banquet Dinners, which was always a great event to attend. Congratulations to all the scouts who received badges and to the 5th graders who crossed over to Troop. And lastly, as many of you may know, March is Women's History Month, but it's also Board Appreciation Month. On behalf of our students and staff and parents, I'd like to extend our gratitude and appreciation for your time and dedication. There's a little gift at your place to show a small token of our appreciation for your graciousness and to volunteer, which takes away, I know, from your family and your profession, too, in order to give back to the community. So, thank you all very much for your service.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Scarpetti?
Not a question, but I'd just like to follow up. The Screenagers version that we saw was the elementary version. And there's, I guess, the high school version as well. And I would suggest anybody, it was very interesting. And anybody who's interested, get in touch with Chantel.
Anyone else? Dr. Scarpetti, I actually have one question. Regarding the calendar, do you know when you're going to be asking us to vote on that?
Next month.
Next month, okay.
So, it was odd, Mrs. Messina-Mullin, that we were looking last month and we did not have a board meeting in April. I can't remember why. I don't know if it's something fell or if it was something, we didn't have one. And some of you may recall, when I first arrived here, I created a PTOA council, which we meet monthly. And some of the feedback I received of saying, "Hey, Vince, just a reminder, you know, if you do it a little too late, it impacts things that we're doing in events." So, it'll be next month, I'll bring it up to you because I don't want to say, have it now, then have a snow day or an event that occurred where then we add it. So, next month, I'll be asking the board to forgive that if there's no unforeseen circumstances that arise.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Gray, your report, please.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Just an update on three of our grants this month. The ARPA Summer Montel Health Supports Grant. Again, this is a grant for the delivery of mental health services during summer programming. It's a $50,000 grant. Of course, we haven't started spending that down yet. We will, once the summer hits. We also have a primary mental health grant, $20,000 grant. This is the grant that I've been speaking about, which is the K-3 Early Detection Intervention Program. And that is a $20,000 grant. We've spent about $8,000 or $8,500 out of that. We have about $11,500 remaining. And finally, the ARPA School Mental Health Specialist Grant. This is the grant that is paying for a school social worker. We are in year two, and it is paying for 100% of the salary. If you'll remember during our workshops, and then again, when Dr. Scarpetti presented to the Board of Finance, next year, we will be funding 30% of that in our operating budget, and the grant will still fund 70%. The following year, fiscal year '27, it will be 100% in our operating budget. For any families that are watching at home, as always, we encourage families to check the free and reduced lunch applications on our website. They've been updated, so if anyone has a need or feels that they may qualify, please at any time. That's a rolling enrollment throughout the year. As Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, on Monday, March 3rd, he presented the proposed Orange Board of Education budget to the Board of Finance. The proposed budget is in the amount of $24,214,154, which is an increase of 3.9%. At the conclusion of the meeting, we also presented the capital, the items for capital plan. Those items included a building generator here at MLT, paving the playground blacktop up Turkey Hill School, library media center refurbishment, which is the flooring and the furniture at Peck Place School, refinish and relining the gymnasium floors at all of our buildings, stop-arm cameras for buses, and HVAC upgrades in all of our schools. And that concludes the business portion of my report.
Any questions for Dr., Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I just wondered, is there any concern about grants or any federal money being interrupted?
So, at this point, with the grants that we have, I believe that those are state-funded. I don't believe it's coming from the federal. So, I think we are fine with the three grants that I highlighted this evening.
But title money or anything like that?
Haven't heard.
Will that be impacting our, will it have an impact on our budget?
It could. If funds are withheld, then of course, it could have an impact on the budget. I think that's something we'll have to deal with when we get to that point, if and when we get to that point, right? I think that's, that's pretty much around the state with districts and towns.
All right, but the other grants are state money.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gray's first report? To move on to your second report.
Sure. Quickly with facilities. We had some, we have inspections going on this time of year. Fire protection has been testing our sprinkler systems. They recently conducted the quarterly fire sprinkler system inspections at all of our schools. There were several fixtures that were recommended for replacement due to age. Otherwise, our systems are operating normally. And then we also, along the lines of fire safety, have our fire detection system being tested. Actually, Turkey Hill is being tested this evening. Johnson Controls is currently conducting these inspections, and it's the fire detection systems in the buildings, which entails testing the fire panels in each building, the system batteries, the alarms, the flashing strobes, and each smoke detector in the building. Once the inspections are completed, a report is generated, and it outlines any recommendations for repair or replacement that might be needed as well. Usually with that, it's our batteries. The batteries last about a year and a half or so, and there are $20 battery that we replace. And that concludes my report for facilities.
Any questions for Mr. Gray? Okay, moving on. Dr. Russo, would you like to give your report?
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, we had Friday professional learning with our staff. We did link the schedule to the board update, but for a quick recap, our kindergarten through grade three teachers engaged in a digital DIBELS training. And DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. We have been, up till now, using the old-fashioned paper and pencil, but we shifted to the digital version. And of course, our teachers were worried that they needed more practice and that they might forget things for the fall, but we purposefully and intentionally provided the training now, and we will have another follow-up in the fall, so they're not so overwhelmed when they make that switch in the fall. And we will have additional practice during our faculty meetings just to improve that inter-rater reliability with the collection of that data. So, that was for K through three. Mrs. Edo will talk about the preschool and some of the specials like school psych and speech and language. But the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers, they engaged in two math sessions with two resources that we've begun to use, FRAX and Reflex, and one writing session to continue that work. And if you've had a chance to look at the March sessions for professional learning, it wasn't just on Friday. March 5th, we started with our small grade-level language comprehension follow-ups at each of the schools. We completed seven sessions before Friday's PD date, and then we have two more tomorrow, and then two more, and we've met with every single grade level at every single school for those follow-up language comprehension sessions. And those are important because we just finished our mid-year data collection, and we were really able to see how students are really improving with their word recognition skills and what we definitely need to improve on for the language comprehension. We got to meet in small groups, analyze text, plan for those sessions, brought students in to model, to see how they perform and respond. And we've also been working with kindergarten on making sure that every, you know, no one slips through the cracks and everybody gets the interventions that they need early because early reading success is so critical. And I think that ends our report for curriculum.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Scarpetti and Dr. Russo shared earlier, the district had a lot going on on Friday for our District-Wide Professional Development Day. Our pre-K team worked on reviewing the K curriculum and ensuring that they're aligning and preparing our pre-K students for lessons and activities that would position them even better for our kindergarten and adding that information to Rubicon, which is our curriculum management system. Our special education teachers, occupational therapists, speech and language pathologists, and some of our paraprofessionals engaged in professional learning alongside with the general education colleagues regarding the district's writing initiative and math in our effort to make sure we are aligning what we are doing with our special education students with these research-based interventions. Our school psychologists, board-certified behavior analysts, and social workers engaged in professional learning and collaboration related to family engagement resources and other personalized learning activities. Paraeducators had the option to participate in those district-wide initiatives or de-escalation strategies. They also engaged in the physical and psychological management refresher training if they held that certification. Our pre-K lottery families have been notified of their child's acceptance into the pre-K program, and these families have been invited to a virtual orientation on March 22nd. Our extended school year, or ESY, planning for our students and individual, who have individual education plans and are eligible for this service, has begun. Job postings are out for staff who are interested in applying to work over the summer and are encouraged to call the Special Services Department. As Dr. Scarpetti shared earlier, Orange Rotary generously provided us a gift of $15,000 last year. These funds have been used to run after-school programs for children who are experiencing trauma or anxiety or a death in the family. We've also used these funds to help support families. And that being said, the remainder of our Rotary funds, we will be using to partner with our primary project to offer another family fun event on May 22nd, just like we did last year. We will be sending out invitations to all K through three families and their siblings to sign up, and an RSVP is required because we will be serving dinner and we will be planning our activities based on our enrollment. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Edo. Any questions from anyone?
I'm just curious as to how many students will be enrolled in the pre-K program next year? Is it similar to what we have this year?
We'll actually be able to increase that by four students because we're going to be expanding one of our rooms. So, we have about 48, 58 students enrolled.
Okay, because I'm looking at this year, the numbers are 64.
Okay, so we have about 12 in each classroom.
Yeah.
Six.
Yeah.
There are four slots that are reserved in each of those classrooms for children with IEDs.
Right, right.
And these slots are opened up to our 3K, 4K, or 3 and 4-year-olds. And it depends on how many kids remain from the previous year and which kids are going out to kindergarten. So, we have accepted 23 pre-K 3-year-olds right now and seven pre-K 4-year-olds.
Okay. All right, and you talked about an after-school program using the Rotary money. Who is running that or presenting that?
Our school psychologists and social workers run those.
Okay.
And it's after school. They invite families to have their child participate, and it runs for six, four to six weeks, depending on what.
What the need is and whatnot. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Messina-Mullin, if I could interrupt the agenda. I know we already had public participation. We have someone who liked to speak. She was waiting downstairs. I think there possibly could have been a miscommunication downstairs, so I'd like her voice to be heard. And I know usually when people are late, and I don't think that was the case in this situation. You can't speak right now, ma'am. So, but I did have a conversation that she was waiting downstairs, so out of respect for her time and wanting to hear her voice, if you wouldn't mind allowing that, I would appreciate that.
Yes, of course. Mrs. Riquio, would you like to read the statement before she proceeds?
Yep. Speakers may offer objective, sorry. Speakers may offer objective.
Where am I going? Speaker.
No. Either way, it's fine. Speakers may offer objective comments to the board concerning school operations and programs. Comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Orange Board of Education personnel or any person associated with the Orange Public School System. Comments about security issues, matters related to due process, negotiations, or grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy App, FERPA, discussions about students are prohibited absent a written parent waiver. Public participation does not allow for two-way conversation between the board and the participants. We thank you for expressing your thoughts and opinions. All comments will be taken into consideration.
Ma'am, if you just go to the podium to state your name and address, please? And if there is a piece of paper up there, just write it down as well. Okay. Thank you. Can't have everything.
So, again, my name is Jenny. I'm just saying that 43 Pike Crest Road in Orange, Connecticut. I am in classroom eight, and I've been here and missed the way for six years and in the school district for 18 and 19. I was here last month to, and we are still connected, so it's been a long, long, I have been in contact with the State Labor Board, and they have had contact with the Board of Education Attorney.
Okay. She had concerns with their conversation. There is supposedly some plan that is going to be enacted, but the law went into effect January 1st of 2025, and her concern is, right now, we are not occurring the time nor the paid time off or the hours. I am just here regarding this issue. She advised me to file a formal complaint with the Connecticut's Wage and Workplace Standards Division, which I did on Thursday. And I would just like the board to know, we're still here, we're still going to fight, and it's the law. And until I hear otherwise of a plan, I will be here every month fighting for what is right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, moving on to board business. These policies here are first reads. There'll be second reads at our next board meeting. So, first, policy first read, Orange Board of Education Policy 4115, Personnel, excuse me, Certified Educator and Leader Evaluation/Support. Number two, policy first read, Orange Board of Education Policy 4117.5, Personnel, Certified Termination of Employment. Number three, policy first read, Orange Board of Education Policy 4118.233-4218.233, Personnel, Certified/Non-Certified Weapons and Dangerous Insurance. Again, these will be second reads at our next Board of Education meeting. If you have any questions after reading them, please reach out to Mrs. Hadlock. Moving on to standing committees, Finance and Operations, Mrs. Riquio?
I'm already out. Yes, the Finance and Operations Subcommittee met prior to this meeting and went over the January and February financials, reviewed the cafeteria, and the grants, as Mr. Gray has already explained. All is within budget and on point, so we're good.
Any questions for Mrs. Riquio? Anyone? Moving on to Personnel Policy Transportation, Mrs. Hadlock.
Due to my traveling schedule and limited time available, Dr. Scarpetti and I met together to review the three first reads that are presented tonight. Our entire committee will meet, hopefully, on March 31st to review some more detailed and complex policies, and we will hopefully get those as first reads next month.
Thank you, Mrs. Hadlock. Any questions for Mrs. Hadlock? Okay, moving on to Building and Grounds, Safety and Security, Mr. Scorinzi.
Thanks. We did meet this month, but during a biannual boiler inspection conducted by the state, it was discovered the steam boiler at Mariel was leaking and, as a result, needs replacing. The district is currently gathering quotes for the project, and once all estimates are received, Building and Grounds Meeting will occur. We'll review the quotes, choose a vendor, and bring that recommendation to the full board.
Thank you, Mrs. Scorinzi. Any questions for Mr. Scorinzi?
I'm just trying to remember, do we have a copier contract that's supposed to be coming up this year as well?
Yes.
I didn't know if that was something that Building and Grounds would be talking about.
That will be occurring. Typically, what we've done with a copier contract, we've had vendors come in to present to the board, and that's something that's for the following year, so.
But that'll be happening this year? We'll be, they'll be coming in, but it won't be in this current budget, right?
Correct.
Fiscal year '27, so next year will be.
Okay. All right. I couldn't remember when that contract was up. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a question. The boiler, that's not the original boiler that's got to be replaced. There's something down there, isn't there, that we're still, that's still original?
I believe the sections in the steam boiler are the original.
Okay.
And so, it's leaking, there's getting sections. And to take the sections apart, try to put a new one in, they never go back.
Oh. It owes us nothing. It belongs in the museum anyway, so, so really, that's, that's fine. Thank you, okay.
I definitely do.
Any other questions for Mr. Scorinzi? Okay, moving on to Curriculum Instruction Technology, Mr. Zymon.
We will dovetail with policy and be meeting on March 31st.
Any questions for Mr. Zymon? Okay, ACES report, Mrs. Riquio?
Yes, ACES met on Thursday, March 13th. We had a binder of 26 budgets that we had to review. We haven't reviewed all of them. We reviewed all the magnet school funding. We did, I don't know, there had to be about eight of them that we did, and they were lengthy, to put it mildly. We also had similar policies that were also, they were new policies, so, that we approved as well. Other thing, they are, we are operating at a significant surplus, which is good, which means we can keep our prices lower. We are evaluating many of our programs to see which ones are effective, which ones are not being used as much. Because ACES has a tendency to do a lot of really good things. Somebody says, "Hey, we need this," and we give them whatever they need, and then we just let it keep going. Whether or not it's being used later, it's a whole different conversation. So, sunsetting seems to be a challenge sometimes. So, that's one of the things that we've been looking at, is are there certain things that we need to sunset, transition into something else? And so, we know there's at least one thing, which is good, that we can kind of merge with a different area. And I'll give you more information when it's all finalized. The only other thing that may be of interest is that the ACES Gala is on March 27th, same time as the Sullivan Award. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Riquio? Okay. I would like to move for an adjournment of the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting from anyone? Susan, second.
Can.
Rhannette? All in favor? Opposed? Obstained? Thank you, everyone.